Okay, now we'll go ahead for real this time. So, good afternoon, good evening, I'm Petra Sultan. I'm the Senior Director of Programs for Thrive Alliance, which is the Alliance of Nonprofits for San Mateo County. Welcome to Thrive and Choose Children's Candidate Forum for Board of Supervisors District 2, which covers San Mateo City, Foster City, and parts of Belmont. So, we're grateful to the city of San Mateo for allowing us to use the council chambers. And we're excited to welcome all of you who are in the room, as well as everyone who's on Zoom. For those of you joining by Zoom, I'll now explain how to access both the Spanish interpretation and the live captioning. So, to hear this forum in Spanish, click the interpretation logo on the right-hand side. I'm going to say it in Spanish as well. Para escuchar este foro en español, haga clic en el icono del global a la derecha. To turn on real-time transcription, click the More button on the bottom right to enable the transcript. I'd like to do a land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that our work is on the ancestral and unceded land of the Romatash Aloni. A bit about Thrive. We're a trusted network of over 200 nonprofit organizations, government entities, foundations, businesses, and community leaders with a shared commitment to strengthening the nonprofit sector, thereby improving the quality of life in San Mateo County. Thrive unites the voice and influence of nonprofits, helps build a capacity, and enables effective cross-sector collaboration. We're co-hosting this event with Choose Children, a project of the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. Christine Zorsetton will now welcome you.
Thank you, Petra. I'm hoping I will do this right with a hold my little mic. On behalf of Choose Children and Silicon Valley Community Foundation, welcome to tonight's candidate forum. And I'd first like to thank Petra and the great Thrive team for all you've done to put this forum together. We really are honored to collaborate with such a great organization, and it's been a wonderful partnership. And I'd like to thank our candidates for San Mateo County District 2 Supervisor for joining us this evening and engaging in this conversation about key issues for children and their families. So, thank you for being here. Choose Children is an initiative of Silicon Valley Community Foundation. It's a partnership of organizations and individuals committed to creating a future in San Mateo and Santa Clara counties where families with young children can live and thrive. We work to champion babies, toddlers, and preschoolers, and ensure that elected officials and candidates for office take action and support investment and approaches that advance the well-being, care, and learning of young children, their families, and the essential workers who care for them. Choose Children is a nonpartisan and non-endorsing initiative that uses the opportunity provided by an election to elevate issues important to our young children and give them a voice in our future. Our kids need us. We have a responsibility to ensure that young children begin their lives healthy, safe, and ready to succeed in school and life. And we need our kids even more. The economic vibrancy of our region relies on making a place where families with young children can live and thrive. When we work together to ensure that families are supported, the impacts are far-reaching and long-lasting. We see better educational career outcomes for our next generation, greater economic security and mobility for our early-care workforce and their families, and a strengthened local economy. So, we look forward to tonight's discussion, and we thank you all for joining us.
Thank you, Christine. And it has been a pleasure working with your team as well. So, in addition to Choose Children, we partnered with our member nonprofit organizations to develop the questions for tonight. Representing many of the organizations we have here will be, they'll be asking the questions directly of the candidates. They include the following organizations: The Age Forward Coalition, Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities, San Francisco Coninsula People Power, Leadership Council San Mateo County, Youth Leadership Institute, CAMINAR, and the Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council. Thrive, Choose Children, and all of the organizations asking questions are, as Christine said, nonpartisan and non-endorsing. We developed this series of candidate forums in conjunction with our membership. The purpose of these forums is twofold: to give candidates running in San Mateo County the opportunity to introduce themselves to voters, present their positions on the most pressing issues for nonprofits and their communities. The second purpose is to highlight the excellent work and the most pressing concerns of our member nonprofits back to the candidates. Thrive values voter engagement and voter turnout, and this is one of many ways that Thrive encourages greater participation. We invite you to join us in our other upcoming candidate forums or view the recordings of the ones that have already happened. You can also find out more about what we're doing on our website. On October 13th, we'll be having pros and cons of the ballot initiatives hosted with the League of Women Voters. You can find all of this on our website, thriveliance.org. This event will be recorded in English and in Spanish, and then will be available on our website. The format for this evening is as follows. Each candidate will start with a two-minute introduction and then end with a 90-second closing statement. In between, our co-hosting organizations will introduce themselves and then ask a question. Candidates will have 30 seconds to answer, and then a 30-second rebuttal. Halfway through, we'll have a series of short-answer questions. You'll have 30 seconds to respond. We solicited these questions in advance from our partner organizations, so we will not be taking additional questions from the audience tonight. On Zoom, the chat function has been disabled in order to make sure that we keep this event nonpartisan and non-endorsing. In the room, please be respectful of the same rules. At this time, I'd like to welcome the candidates, trustee Noelia Corzo and councilmember Charles Stone. Well, I asked them ahead of time what they would like to be called, and we had a little bit of discussion. But we decided to go with informal. So, we're going to go with Noelia and Charles. So, with that, Noelia, would you like to start with your opening statement?
Forgot about the mic. Si tus prioridades son los niños y nuestras comunidades de ancianos y discapacitados, soy tu candidata. Me llamo Noelia Corzo. Estoy aquí para traer un cambio positivo a nuestro condado. Don't worry, I'm going to say it in English, too. If you care about children, our elders, and our community of people with disabilities, I'm your candidate. My name is Noelia Corzo, and I'm here to bring positive change to our county as your District 2 Supervisor. Out of the two of us here, I've lived the same struggles as the communities I've dedicated my life to: children, women, older adults, people with disabilities, immigrants, renters, domestic violence survivors, gun violence survivors, and people impacted by suicide. I'm the daughter of Guatemalan immigrants who came to this country with nothing. I went to college, and I became a single mom. The odds were against me, but through hard work, I got my degree, and I built a life for my son and me. As a social worker, I wake up every day to get children and adults with disabilities the services they need, and I see exactly where they fall through the cracks. I've been elected twice to the board of the largest school district in our county with a budget bigger than Belmont and Foster City combined. I served as president through the pandemic, when school boards got hit especially hard. I bring the deep professional and personal experience that is currently missing on our board, experience that matters. In a county that is over 62% people of color, it is unacceptable that we have a board that does not reflect our community and the challenges we live every day. You can help make history by electing me as the first Latina supervisor in our county. I'm your only opportunity to elect a person of color to our board, and it's possible that I'll be the only woman. That's me, and I'm here to listen to you. Gracias.
Good evening. Before we start, there was something that was said just now, and also, and I think the last forum, and I want to make sure that folks do understand because these people deserve some respect. Both Ruben and Rose Jacobs-Gibson were people of color who served very ably on our Board of Supervisors and were wonderful supervisors. And I wanted to correct that because I think that something that was a little bit off came out in the last forum. In any event, thank you for having me here tonight. I really appreciate it. My name is Charles Stone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a San Mateo County native. I have lived in District 2 for 33 years, and I've been a registered voter here my entire adult life. My mother was a special education teacher, and my father was a professional musician who arrived in California in the '50s from Butte, Montana, with nothing but $10 in his pocket from a home in Butte that did not have an indoor toilet. My priorities for you are the same priorities I have for my children. I want to keep us all safe. I want to make sure that we have affordable housing that our kids can use to stay here in the communities they've grown up in. I want to improve our public transit system. I want to make sure that our budget continues to be sustainable. I want to fight climate change and its effects, wildfires, droughts, like the one we're experiencing right now. These are existential threats to our communities. And of course, they disproportionately affect people of color and those who are in the most need. A little bit more about me. I'm a local, as I said. I attended Abbott Middle School and Hillsdale High School before going off to UC San Diego, where I got a bachelor's in political science and a double minor in law and society and psychology. After that, I returned home before I went to law school. And I looked this up today. I rented a home with three high school friends for $900 a month, a three-bedroom. Today, I found a similar unit, and it was $3,500 a month. That's a 400% increase. That's living the affordable housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I get the honor to ask the first question this evening. So, you already know who I am clearly, and I shared about Choose Children. San Mateo County is both an amazing community in which to grow up and, for increasing numbers, a financially difficult place to raise a family, as you've just mentioned. Over the last decade, as the overall population has grown, our population of children birthed to age five has declined by more than 10%. A recent public survey by Choose Children revealed that more than 80% of likely general election voters doubt whether future generations will be able to afford living in our community. If elected, what is your vision to make San Mateo County a place where families with children can live and thrive? And what specific initiatives and actions will you take to help families?
The way we're going to do this now is each one of you will have one minute to answer, and then the 30-second rebuttal. And we'll start with Charles. Always a microphone, or else Zoom people can't hear you.
We don't want that.
We actually have a large Zoom audience.
Hello to the Zoom audience. So, when I think about these issues, I think about the pillars of equity. I think about housing security, food security, educational equity, transit equity, good-paying jobs, and being safe and secure from crime. In there, of course, is the childcare crisis, which is very real. I read that something like 70% of our childcare centers are in need of moderate or severe repairs to their infrastructure. We lost 30,000 childcare workers during the pandemic. Good news is, all but 10% of them have returned. So, that's some hope on the horizon. My belief is that if we fix affordable housing, and we fix good-paying jobs, and we create a world-class public transit system with equitable access to all, we've done just about 3/4 of the work, and I think we'd be shocked at how much better things got. One of the things I'm proudest of that I've done is raise the minimum wage in Belmont to, last year, the actual highest in San Mateo County and much higher than the state.
Can I stand for, oh, just stay sitting? Okay.
Unless you both want to stand.
No. I just feel a little more comfortable. But this is a really good question. I have lived experience with childcare issues. When I graduated from San Francisco State, I could not find childcare in my city or even anywhere nearby. And it made me have to choose to move, it made me, it forced me to look for job opportunities out of our county. And I know that the same continues today. As a trustee, we play a role in providing childcare to our community. And that is something that I'm very proud to, I'm very proud to say that in our school district, we have increased childcare. We have partnered with community organizations. And I've also endorsed Measure D-D, an initiative in South San Francisco to fund preschool for all. I have a lot of insight to the issues that our home daycare providers face, and we absolutely have to support them as a county and with money and resources.
30 seconds to respond. You don't have to.
Oh, I'm happy. That will never be a problem, my promise.
Okay, then I won't ask you again. Go ahead.
You know, one of the things I think about when I think about the childcare crisis is that I suspect people don't fully understand how impactful it is, not just people of color and those who are lower income, but also how it impacts our economy. It's a huge and a substantial factor in the workforce shortage that this country is facing right now. So, this is a problem for not only people of color, those who are of lower means, those who are of higher means. My wife and I could not find good-quality childcare, and we could almost afford it if we were willing to get credit card debt every month back in 2005, '06.
One of the things that I didn't mention before is that part of the issue with childcare is that we have a lot of folks that are renters. We know that the childcare and the early childcare workforce is made up of primarily women of color. And so, we need to focus on supporting them if we want to solve the issues that we have in our childcare sector. I don't think that's controversial to say. And I'll stop there, sorry.
Our next question is from Heather Clary. Oh, sorry. Our next question is from Carol. I changed the order on me.
Maybe I changed the order. Thank you both for addressing the concerns of the early childhood education community. And despite the fact that you did say that 10% of the workforce has come back, I have to say that, being an early childcare provider myself, we haven't seen that on the ground. We see early childhood educators still reluctant to come back, and we are struggling to find people, even offering, you know, as high salaries as we possibly can. In addition, the governor has increased the amount of money that a family can make in order to receive subsidized childcare. However, San Mateo County, unlike the whole state of California, you know, has an income level that is, you know, way beyond what that ceiling is in order to make it as a family of two or four. So, I know that you've talked already about what your plans are, but I would invite you to be just a little bit more specific about how you're planning on building an early care and learning, early learning and care workforce that gives all parents access to really high-quality, as you mentioned, early care and education. Thank you.
Noelia, would you like to start?
Thank you. Yes, so, to be more specific, we absolutely have to make sure that your voice and the voice of the women and people that are in the, on the front lines of our early childhood education and childcare crisis, that your voices are heard. I strongly believe that folks most directly impacted, families struggling with childcare, childcare workers, they know the solutions for our system, and we have to work with them, and we have to make sure that we meet their needs. A specific policy that I think we need to really look at is the pay parity policy. This is a policy that other counties have worked on that we need to do more for here in this county. I also believe that, we also need to protect tenants. Many of our childcare workers are tenants, they're renters, and they are vulnerable. And, thank you.
So, Carol, thank you for the question. And just to clarify, it's all but 9% of that workforce has returned. The problem, as you articulately stated, is we were already in a childcare shortage before the pandemic. It just took an existing bad situation and made it much worse. It's something I talk about frequently with Karen Hosfoletta, who I'm sure you know, one of my supporters and a member of our community. I think you asked for specific things, and I'm glad you did because I have some. I think we need to talk about a wage floor for childcare providers. I think we need to talk about the county getting into the business of providing childcare on a much bigger scale. When I look at the property where the Juvenile Detention Center is, up at 92 in Paul Hemus, I envision workforce housing, but I also envision a huge and vibrant world-class childcare center accessible to all through a public bus that runs up and down Ralston and Paul Hemus. I have a huge vision for that. You know, what we really need to do in this country is have universal access to childcare for all. The devil is, of course, in the details. Those are a few ideas. We also have to figure out how to make ECE providers and workforce feel more valued, or they're going to continue to leave.
30 seconds each again.
I think Charles made some really good points there. And I will add that, as a school board trustee, what I have seen is that our county is not leading enough on this issue and leveraging the community partners that we have in terms of school districts, cities. What space do we have? How do we tackle this issue together in a very laser-focused way? How do we leverage? One of the issues is that there's not enough space at times. So, we need a partner.
Yeah, I think we absolutely need a layer cake approach: fed, state, local, and nonprofit. That's how we're going to get to some measure of success over time. You know, another specific solution is, Santa Clara County has a chief children's officer. I think we need that here in San Mateo County. I think that would help keep our focus on a very important issue and not let us kind of lose our way. You know, it's been said over $10 billion is needed in childcare infrastructure in this state. $10 billion. This is not a problem we're going to solve overnight. I also think developers can play a role. One of the things we've been working on in all our local communities is finding housing developers that will build childcare as part of their developments.
Thank you for this wonderful childcare conversation. I'm Heather Clary. I'm the CEO of Coninsula Family Service, and we operate eight early learning centers in our county. For a dozen years, District 2 Supervisor Carol Groom has been a champion for children, spearheading the big lift to increase third-grade reading proficiency through proactive engagement and early interventions. How will you expand and build on the big lift? And how will you pay for all these wonderful ideas you're mentioning right now?
So, I get to go first on the "how do you pay for it?" question, huh? Okay, all right. So, first of all, I applaud Supervisor Groom for her work on the big lift and a lot of other child issues. I've been a fan since she was my councilmember and sat on the status right here in this room. You know, I think we also, by the way, not to add another item to pay for, but what we really need to go along with the big lift reading effort is a big lift math effort as well. The United States consistently ranks near the bottom of industrialized nations in math in a workforce that is increasingly relying on math skills. We've got to crack that nut, too. We're about to come into, I don't want to call it a windfall, but some money is going to be freed up in the next couple of budget cycles because the county has done such an excellent job paying down their pension obligations. So, it's going to be about $40 million to play with that didn't previously exist, and I'd be a fan of using some of that money to start these initiatives. But again, if you partner with the Fed, with the state, with the local, with the nonprofits, the "how do we pay for it?" issue doesn't become clear, but it becomes a lot less murky.
That's the nicest stock possible.
I am a big fan of the big lift. And unfortunately, our school district, the largest, the San Mateo Foster City School District, the largest in our county, is not part of the big lift. But we have continued to do that work in terms of having similar goals to the big lift. It is 100% a program that I want to honor, continue, and expand. And it's actually, I think it's actually very telling, the information that we do or don't share with the big lift and our school district. I have a close friend that is one of the leaders at the county on the big lift initiative, and we talk regularly, and we talk about data, and what kind of data? And are we talking about the same kinds of data? And how do we really lift up how we're using the funds that we're already investing? In terms of how do we continue to pay for childcare and for the big lift? We have Measure K funds.
So, just to continue, I think the Measure K funds is a good comment. There's definitely some room for some money there through grants, especially through the Measure K funds that are discretionary through the supervisors. A lot of that's programmatic. I certainly wouldn't want to cannibalize Measure K's affordable housing funds too much because then you're really stealing from Peter to pay Paul. Not a good idea. You know, I really think that as much as this county does work well with its nonprofit partners, like CAMINAR, like a lot of the organizations that are here tonight, Samaritan House, I think we can do even more. I come from a community where I helped lead an education foundation to the highest levels of fundraising. To that point, I'd like to do that again.
Funding is 100% a part of the solution, and we also have to leverage the funding that we already have to the most, like, the most efficiently possible. We have a lot of wealth already in this county, and we are throwing a lot of dollars around. And one of the things that I know is happening with our county partnerships is that the county is supporting assessments of how the infrastructure of our nonprofits and making sure that they're as efficient as possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather.
My name is Ben McMullin. I'm the Systems Change Advocate at Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities, Change advocacy to promote the full and equal integration and participation of people with disabilities. My question is, what does equity mean to you? And what program can be the most equitable in the county? Or do you believe it's the most equitable in the county?
I love talking about equity. One of the positives that we have to lift up in our county is that we have a chief equity officer. I believe she needs more support. But what is equity? To me, equity is giving everyone what they need. It's not giving everyone the same thing. It is taking the time and giving people the space to tell you what they need, taking that information, and aligning it with resources and with support and with self-determination. I'm a social worker for Golden Gate Regional Center. I work with people with developmental disabilities, and that is my wheelhouse. I can talk about equity all day, but that is probably the best way I can define it quickly. What we need to do in our county is continue, it's already clear, the county wants to do equity work, and now it's how.
So thanks for the question, Ben, and it's good to see you outside of a SAM Trans meeting where I usually see you. Thank you for your work on those important issues. I'm gonna start there because you remind me of transit. I think that the Ready Wheels Program and Paratransit that's running this county is very good. It can be better. But I think that ensuring that folks with disabilities have mobility is one of the most important things that we can do to make sure that they are experiencing equity. What does equity mean to me? Equity means to me that when we're talking about folks having an equal opportunity, we remember that not everybody starts from the same place. And those that are historically oppressed and disadvantaged are gonna need to get more help to get to the starting line in the first place. That's sort of the way I think about it. And when I think about how we can achieve that equity, what programs we can use, it's multi, the problems are multifactorial, and so are the solutions. As I said before, it's not one issue, it's not one program. It's housing, it's wages, it's transit, it's education, it's fighting climate change, which disproportionately affects those of color and those who are disadvantaged in other ways. It's doing that in every single one of those pillars.
I mentioned our chief equity officer. I really believe that we have to be grounded in data, and we have to support our chief equity officer. She has a coordinator now. But to take on equity in a county of over 800,000 people is a big task with just two people at the forefront of it. So.
You're just supposed to have 30 seconds.
Yes, yes. So, am I done? Sorry, I'm a little.
It's okay.
That was not your fault.
I'm not sure.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Let's finish your thought, because that was our time. We're back.
So we need to support our chief equity officer. We need to make sure that our county commissions are empowered to do the work that they are already doing and that they have the resources to give recommendations and have those taken into account and actually funded.
I think building out the organization underneath the chief equity officer is a great idea. I applauded that move to a chief equity officer. I thought it was fantastic, and we mirrored it in Belmont where I'm on the council, and we now have an equity officer for our organization as well. In small cities, everyone wears multiple hats, and so I'm experiencing this issue firsthand where it's hard for one person to do that. And in a county our size, we do need more help there. But it's a lot more than that. It's keeping equity in mind in every decision, and that's key. That's something I've been really mindful of over the last couple of years and will continue to be mindful of as a supervisor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. The next question comes from me. So Thrive has been working very hard on some environment and sustainability issues, and one of the things that we are doing on October 3rd is we're having a climate summit for all of San Mateo County with partners Climate Resilient Communities, Nuestra Casa, and Ride South City. And the reason we're doing this is because we want to really elevate the issues, especially of environmental justice. You are all invited to come. You can sign up on our website or just let me know. October 3rd is coming up. So my question is, it's San Mateo County is highly exposed to multiple climate exacerbated hazards. Community leaders have sounded the alarm about a climate emergency, which you guys have addressed to a bit, requires immediate and innovative and adaptive actions. Yet it remains unclear who is responsible for implementing climate adaptation in the county and where will the money come from? So what is your proposed approach for identifying and funding climate adaptation projects in both unincorporated and in incorporated county?
I'm not sure, but everyone, I hope, is aware that.
It's actually Charles starts.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's confusing.
So I want to applaud the county. I think maybe the county's work has been undervalued a little bit. You know, they did a lot of work over the last year in terms of exploring and probing and figuring out whether or not they should put a tax measure on the ballot that would go to precisely the type of issues you're talking about. And in the end, they decided not to do it, and I think that that was the right move, given the climate for taxes right now. But I don't think that that work has to be wasted, and I don't think that that effort should be abandoned. We need to continue that work at the county level. And, you know, I recall eight years ago, Jackie Spear talking about exactly this issue in Foster City, that there was not one dedicated organization within San Mateo County to sort of be responsible for funding and sponsoring and issue spotting, all the things that go along with climate change, flooding, wildfires, drought, you name it, there's gotta be one agency that oversees it. I think we've done a lot of that work with CCAG, and I think we're gonna do even more in the future.
The council member mentioned the measure that the county did some polling for. They did polling, they decided not to move forward with that. That poll, that measure was potentially going to fund a very focused county effort to address the issues of environmental justice and climate change, and that polling hasn't been released. And I think that it needs to be released, because if we, as a community, don't know how to combat the concerns in our own community, then how are we going to bring people into the issue to tackle it together? There's lots of different cities and communities tackling it in different ways. Foster City is building their levy. San Mateo hasn't taken that step yet, but it doesn't make sense to piecemeal it. We have to tackle it together, and we need the information in order to do that. Even when polling doesn't come out favorable, there are lessons to be learned there, and there are communities that are most directly impacted, and we need to address their concerns.
So one of the things I want to uplift in this vein is Supervisor Dave Pine and Carol Groom's work to create Peninsula Clean Energy. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with it, but it's probably the most impactful thing this county has done in terms of climate change ever. Peninsula Clean Energy is your, is most likely your energy procure, even though unfortunately the energy still travels over lines owned by PG&E, and I'm not gonna go there right now, but I'm not a huge fan. You know, cities like Belmont have taken a lead by going to Echo 100, which is all clean energy through Peninsula Clean Energy. I think every city and school district should do the same.
One of my biggest supporters, Mayor Rick Bonilla, is an advocate and a board member for Peninsula Clean Energy, and I am blessed to have his mentorship and support. I will not sit here and pretend to be an expert on every single issue in our community, but I am 100% committed to working and lifting up those who are the experts and bringing more people into the work, because we can't just have folks talking about these things. We have to have everyone working on it together.
Thank you. Hello? Can you hear me right? No? Oh, okay. I'll take off my mask. Hello? Yeah, okay, cool. Hi, my name's Andrea Hill. Buenas tardes, hola. So I'm from Corneille. I'm with Youth Leadership Intercy. At YLI, young people realize their power by learning how to use their voices to create meaningful changes. We serve young people all across the county, from here all the way to the coast side. We work with coalitions with elected officials to promote policy change that make our communities more equitable and just for young people. Often, our young people share that they fear they will be pushed out of the communities that they navigate in as the contingency, the housing market rises. So we believe that change happens and conversation takes place. So my question today is how you incorporate youth voices at the decision-making process and build the infrastructure for civic engagement?
It's my turn this time, right? I am 100% committed to lifting up young people's voices and to creating space for their voices. I have dedicated my life to it. My first job out of college was working with foster youth in San Francisco, and it has continued to be a priority for me. In my school district, we created an equity task force, and we made sure to have three spots specifically for young people to share their voices. And we actually then focused some of our work on the issues of LGBTQ+ youth in our schools because of the voices from our students. That is just a part of my leadership and how I operate. There are many young people involved in my campaign and in the work that I do on a day-to-day basis. Representation matters. Young people, they need to see people who look and talk and face the same struggles they do in order to continue lifting up their voices.
So it's a great question, and I love YLI. We worked really closely with them when we were getting SAM Trans Measure W passed, and they were tremendously helpful. I am 100% fully committed to involving youth in decision-making. I think that we have not done a good enough job teaching how to be involved in our schools. Civics has kind of fallen by the wayside, and it's something we need to recapture. One of the ways we do that is to involve our young people in government. In Belmont, we actually have two spots on our Parks and Recs Commission that are reserved for children between 13 and 18. And we had so many people applying for those that in 2014, I started the Youth Advisory Commission, because we had so many leftover people after our two spots were full that we knew we needed to put them somewhere, and that's been a tremendously successful program. In my quote-unquote spare time, I'm a coach for the Carl Mont Mock Trial team, and I hear those same concerns from kids all across demographic spectrum. Everyone is concerned about the ability to stay here when they grow up if they want to. So rest assured that if I'm elected, your views are gonna be very important to me and incorporated into my decision-making. Decision-making, sorry.
The question of, you know, feeling like there is not a place for you in this county as you get older and become an adult is one that I have lived and one that I lift up and I have asked, and I ask elected officials, and I bring it into my work in many different ways. Our young people love our community. Do we love them back? Do our policies and the lived experiences of our young people reflect that we actually are supporting them? We need to protect tenants. Young people want to move out of their parents' homes and become independent, and that's part of the solution.
You disappeared. There you are. I could talk to the whole crowd, too. Sorry. You know, I think it's truly important that we also go out and engage, not just those kids who are actually bold and brave enough to come in and comfortable enough to come in and apply for these positions. That's one of the reasons that I hold, over the last nine-ish years until the pandemic at least, I've held my office hours during times when children can come as well and made sure my kids spread the word through the middle school and the high school community. And I'm not gonna tell you that I had hundreds of students come out, but I definitely had quite a few, and that's how I met the Vote SMC, Vote 16 SMC folks, and I worked with them to try to get them help to get 16-year-olds to vote.
Okay, so we've been doing this for a while. Now we get to do the mental seventh inning stretch, and what we're going to do now are lightning round questions. So you only have 30 seconds to answer, no rebuttals. You don't have to take the full 30 seconds. Some of them might be even answered faster. But this is our chance to get to know each of you a little bit better. So the first question is, when was the last time you took public transportation, and where did you go? And, sorry, it's Charles first.
Yesterday, I took the SAM Trans ECR to work, and I do that at least once a week. And if you're not taking ECR, the ECR route, which is El Camino Real, for those of you who don't know the acronym, you should give it a try if your job and home are anywhere near El Camino. Comes every 15 minutes. It's fantastic. I also use Caltrain once a week, just because I'm on the board of those two organizations, and I feel like it's really important for me to know what's going on. But more importantly, I love public transit. I don't have to worry about drivers that are jerks.
I work from home, and I have a little one that, well, he's not so little, he's 11, that I take to school every morning. He takes SAM Trans home. Last time I took public transportation was probably a couple of weeks ago, when I took Caltrain back from San Francisco after carpooling over there. My son is a youth, right, a young person, and one of the things that I think is an issue is that it's not easy for young people or our elders in our community to get their discount Clipper cards to be able to better access transportation.
So one of the things that happened when I was trying to tell people, come to this forum for the Board of Supervisors, it's really important, and people were like, oh, what does the Board of Supervisors do again? I'm sure you guys have heard that before. So what I was wondering is, maybe you could share with us, because the supervisors do have a lot of responsibility. This is important. But what's kind of one of a surprising thing that people don't know that the supervisors do?
A surprising thing that I have, the surprising thing that I lift up when I tell folks about what Board of Supervisors do is that they are in charge and at the forefront of the public health of our community. They run our county hospitals. I don't think it's something a lot of folks think about, but it's actually three of our four top expenses in the county. And so, you know, health outcomes is 100%, I think, what surprises folks about the role.
So I think most people are surprised to know that there's over $3 billion passing through the county apparatus, but most of it is programmatic Medicare and other money, and that the county health system also has to deal with the fact that the county hospital is overseen by a board, but the number one county health system board. But the number one thing that surprises people is to know that there are these pockets of unincorporated land, where essentially the county supervisors are your city council. That's how Don Horsley has become the unofficial mayor of the coast side, because there's so much unincorporated land out there, and he gets to make the decisions, well, as one of five, that usually city councils do.
Thank you. Hopefully, that shed some light for everyone as to why we're even here. Yeah, what do you supervise? Okay. So my next question is, what is your favorite local activity for your leisure time?
I think I'll go first.
Without doubt, spending time with my kids, and I can tell you for sure that is not their favorite leisure time as 16 and 18-year-olds, but going for a run for my kids up at Sawyer, with my kids at Sawyer Camp Road, at Water Dog, in Edgewood, in Hutter, that is, or even a hike. Those are the moments that I really treasure these days. I'm sure many of you have had children that are now older, and you realize how precious and fleeting those moments are. So that is unequivocally my favorite activity.
My favorite activity is visiting our coastside communities and our beaches. One of my favorite trails is Maury Point, and the trail's there because you get the best of both worlds, hiking trails and a beach experience. I have taken my son there for many years. We spend birthdays there. It's like a special place for us. And we also love to explore tide pools together, and I'm so happy he hasn't aged out of that yet, so.
Sense of theme. Apparently, nobody wants their kids to get older. I'm with you on that. What is the main thing that differentiates you from your opponent? One main thing?
I would say my lived experience. I grew up in this community as the daughter of immigrants. I have experienced homelessness as a child. I have seen, I'm a gun violence survivor, a lot of these issues that the most vulnerable in our community face, I have faced them. And not only do I have that experience, but I use that as motivation to tackle issues in a different way.
See, we learn a lot about each other at these things. I'm a gun violence survivor, too. I think one of the most, I think, so there's a couple of things I want to say. One is, and this is really important, I read this the other day, it doesn't have to happen to me for me to care about it and want to fix it. And can you imagine a world where the inverse would be the truth? But I think the number one thing that differentiates me is experience. I've been on the SAM Transport. I've been on the Caltrain Board. I've been on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board. I've been on the San Mateo County Library Board. I've been chairs of three of those boards, vice chair of another. I also have served as a mayor twice and touched all the things that the Board of Supervisors do.
Okay. So just a reminder before I go to the next question. So District Two is the city of San Mateo, the city of Foster City, and parts of Belmont. So my question is, what's the biggest climate or environmental vulnerability in District Two?
I'm not sure. Go ahead.
It's you.
I'm just excited.
She hasn't answered. We're good.
You know, that's like asking which one of your children you love more, but in a weird way. There is no number one pressing. You've got flooding concerns in the trailer parks around Belmont. You've got sea level rise, bay level rise in Foster City and parts of Belmont and San Mateo. You've got drought, which is not a District Two issue, but a statewide issue. These are all top, and then there's wildfire, which touches each one of those cities as well, believe it or not, because fire does not respect boundaries and will go wherever it does. So I think those are four of the most pressing. There's no way I can give you one, because they're all incredibly important to address. Sorry.
Sea level rise is, in my opinion, the biggest threat, but also the health impacts that being and living in these most vulnerable communities creates. I grew up literally half a block away from 101. We have expanded 101. We have not supported moving away from getting more cars on the road, and the health impacts of that are very real, and they are reflected in the poor health outcomes of the most vulnerable in our county.
Last lightning round question is, what is a recent book that you've read and that you enjoyed? And it does not have to be a serious one. We're not judging your intellectual capabilities, just what's something that you've read recently that you want to share? You're first.
I'm a reading, but, well, I was a reading buddy and will soon again be a reading buddy. I'm a reading buddy. Well, I was a reading buddy and will soon again be a reading buddy at Fiesta Gardens Elementary School. I can't remember the name of the books that we've read. But one that stands out to me is Giraffes Can't Dance. It's a children's book. I love children. It's a beautiful book. I recommend everyone check it out.
So most recently, I was fortunate to read a book that one of our former school board trustees wrote, Han Phan. He's a Vietnamese immigrant who fled in the waning days of Vietnam War. It's called To Distant Shores, and I advise everybody to pick up a copy on Amazon. It's a fascinating story of identity, of generosity, the relationships he formed with folks on the ships that they were housed on for a while, that have kept up through the decades. And how it feels to be an immigrant who had to flee from another country and live here and become successful.
Thank you. Now back to our regular format.
It was a fun lightning round. Hi, I'm Mark Klutz here. I'm the CEO of Caminar. And I just want to take a moment in this time when our democracy is under threat that thrive and patriots set up a forum like this that's so important to preserving civil society. So thank you for all your work. Caminar is a Bay Area mental health and substance use treatment provider that integrates compassion with science to deliver high quality behavioral health. In San Mateo County, we treat individuals with the most severe and complex mental health and substance use issues and provide psychiatry, medication management, therapy, housing, job, and educational support to get people well and keep them well. So I want to focus for a minute on our young people. And as you probably know, there's been an epidemic of depression, anxiety disorders, and suicidality among young kids. Higher proportion among kids of color and LGBTQ kids. But we have a big issue. And the current delivery system is not robust enough to provide enough care for long enough. And it's time that we think about earlier intervention in schools. So as a member of the Board of Supervisors, what would you propose doing to address mental health issues earlier as part of curriculum and the school process?
Charles first.
So the Board of Supervisor's role in that regard, Mark, would be supportive. The Board does not have the power to implement or require the school districts to do anything. Neither does the San Mateo County Office of Education, by the way. It's fascinating how this all works. By the way, huge fan of your organization, looking forward to coming to its annual gala because I'm a huge fan of the West Wing and you have a character from the West Wing coming to speak. Super excited about that. I think the care, the care courts that Governor Newsom has proposed is a solution. It's moving in the right direction for older people. How do we intervene with younger folks? I think education is the answer. It has to be through the schools. I would be definitely interested in using discretionary major K funds to support programs like that. I've lived it. I've watched, actually, my younger daughter have serious mental health issues during the pandemic that had not manifested before. I suppose it's possible they wouldn't have manifested without the pandemic, but I really don't think so. There is serious learning loss and emotional toll from this that we are just beginning to see.
One of the decisions that I made, that I led and that I made with my board in our school district wasn't a popular one. And it was reallocating funds from school resource officers into hiring more counselors, hiring more mental health professionals in our school district. We need to make sure that every single one of our school districts is keeping their public education dollars and prioritizing our kids with it. I am proud to say that we have seen improved mental health outcomes in our school district after having made that decision. I think that our Board of Supervisors, while they cannot mandate anything, they can incentivize and they can lead. And we have to do that because this is life and death. I don't share this often, but as a teenager, I witnessed my brother committed suicide. And this issue is a very personal one to me. We have to recognize the warning signs. We have to invest in our kids early.
So I'd add to that, that we also have to employ the layer cake approach to this problem as well. You know, I think our nonprofit partners have to be more involved. It's quite simple. Again, I think that there's kind of a healthy détente is how I would describe the relationship between the county and a lot of its nonprofit partners. I'd like to see that détente form into something more of a synergistic partnership. How can we leverage each other's strengths and overcome each other's challenges? I think there's definitely room for improvement in that aspect of it.
I wanted to just share a little bit more about the work that our school district has done. We recently published an L3 report. It's Live Lead Learn Report. And we focused on preschool as an indicator for, you know, if we get kids more access to preschool, they will have a better educational experience and they will be able to thrive and not sit in the discomfort of feeling behind in schools and what that means for their mental health in the long run.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Lisa Tealer. Pronounced she/her. I'm the Executive Director of the Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council, also known as BAC-HAC. BAC-HAC is a grassroots community health organization. And for the last 27 years has been dedicated to eliminating health disparities across generations and in diverse communities through education, advocacy, and services. The COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted health disparities in underserved communities and has continually disproportionately impacted the health of those communities. The question I have for both of you is, how have you currently leveraged your position on health equity to serve the health needs of our diverse and often underserved communities? And if you were elected, how we leverage that position on health equity to serve the health needs of our diverse and underserved communities? And specifically, you know, make an example is District Two with North Central and Bejore. Thank you.
I am a board member for Reach Coalition. We did a lot of advocacy around health inequities and how some of the missteps that our county made actually exacerbated the realities of COVID impacts in some of our most vulnerable communities. An example of that is in North Fair Oaks, there was an error in the data. And that led to a decision to not prioritize that area for vaccination, even though they desperately needed it. We advocated around that issue and we continue to do that work. Our school district reached out proactively to, after, you know, my advocacy reached out to our county to prioritize vaccination in North Central San Mateo. Your leadership in the neighborhood that I grew up in and making sure that to this day there is a vaccination and testing site is 100% what we need to continue to support.
So as a council member in a different city, there's not a lot that I can do. But one of the things I did do was, there were not, I would be comfortable saying that the county's response was not exemplary. They did a lot of good and they tried to do a lot of good. And eventually they got their act together and they listened to their partners like you. But one of the things that I was curious about is why there was resistance within some of these communities to the vaccine. So what I did was connect with some of the older black families in the area. The McKinneys, the Swan, some others that I know through various connections. And try to find out why they thought that there were these issues and how we could crack that nut. Because even if you provide the resources, if people aren't willing to take them, we've got a huge problem. And it came down to education and who was to deliver that education. In Belmont, which is where I am on the council, we hosted vaccine sites. And we also did everything that we could within our rather limited penumbrum of responsibilities in that regard. The county was really running the show. Personally, oh, shoot, sorry, I had a whole bunch more. I keep forgetting to look that way.
I think we need to continue to partner with organizations like Reach and with the organization, which I am not going to get the acronym right because it's a hard one.
Jason.
Yes. And neighborhood specific sites like the one in North Central are a model of how you bring people in and how you take the services that they desperately need to them so that it's accessible, so that it's there anytime they need it. And we shouldn't be fighting for funding to continue those sites. We are not out of this pandemic. There are people still getting it. My own father got long haul COVID last year. And I took him to countless appointments. And even though he speaks English, he could not have navigated that without me. And not everyone has a social worker as a daughter to help them. So I think we need to really be proactive. And specifically around long haul COVID, there is data that exists about that issue. And we need to look at it and prioritize it right now.
As someone who experienced long haul COVID himself, I'm sorry to hear that and I hope he's doing better. I'm so glad for the extra 30 seconds now. So I'm a member of the Samtransport. And one of the things I did in that role was make sure that our buses gave free rides to folks who wanted to get to vaccine centers. It would be nice if we could hand deliver them to every single place in the county, but that's not reasonable. We definitely need testing centers in all communities and especially in communities that are disadvantaged. That said, for those folks who aren't in one of those communities, one of the best things we could do was give them a free way of getting from point A to B that was vigorously used and a huge part of a lot of people getting vaccinated. I'm incredibly proud of that.
Thank you. The next person asking questions is from the Age Forward Coalition. And because it's a whole coalition, she's going to ask several questions.
Good evening. I'm Francine Seraphin Dixon and I am here on behalf of the Age Forward Coalition, which is a broad consortium of San Mateo County nonprofit and community organizations and advocates who have been serving older adults and adults with disabilities since 2019. To give you an idea, some of the members of this coalition, there are the Peninsula Family Service, Peninsula Volunteers, Family Caregiver Alliance, Villages of San Mateo County, San Mateo County, San Mateo Japanese American Community Center, Puente and Senior Coastside. That's just to name a few. No tests, no tests. What does this coalition do? Briefly, it is here as an advocate for older adults and adults with disabilities. And it acts as a community with their community partners to find funding, to maintain, promote, protect, and enhance equitable services for this population. It strives to ensure the highest possible attainment of independence, health, and wellbeing for older adults and adults with disabilities, as well as making our county a more aging and disability friendly community. And lastly, but not all, is that it's a collaborative group that works together to exchange information and knowledge, provide leadership, build community wide capacity, and address goals using the California Master Plan of Aging to improve the lives of our older adults and adults with disabilities in our county. So just a very significant statistic, and you may already know this, is that currently there are almost 18% of our population in San Mateo County is 65 years and older. 28% are 60 years and older. And if you fast forward that, you'll see that that will only grow. So our first question for you is, how would you champion transportation, healthcare access, adult daycare, and housing for older adults and people with disabilities?
Charles.
So this is an issue that's near and dear to my heart. Both of my parents aged in place either with me or near. And I was lucky enough to be at home with my mom and hold her hand as she passed away in 2018 after caring for her for two years. I saw firsthand these challenges. And these were people with relative means, not huge means, but relative means. We do a horrible job with the last years of people's lives in this country, in the state and in this county. And I'm not indicting any particular person. We're just not good at it yet. How would I prioritize? What would I do? Mobility and transportation is something I know very well. I'm really proud of the fact that over the last year, we turned a pilot program at Samtrans that gave free passes to kids that qualified for free or discounted school lunches. We made that permanent. The next step is to make it permanent for those over 65. I don't care who you are, if you're over 65 and you want to get on one of our buses, you should be able to do it without worrying about paying a fare. That's something I want to champion next. I, there's so much there.
I would absolutely champion these issues. And I think I did a little bit already earlier when I mentioned that one of the barriers that our elders face in our community is even having access to discount Clipper cards. They need to be able to apply if they are going to have access to transportation at a rate that is affordable for them. My father is 75 years old and he absolutely has needed a lot of support and it can be very taxing. We need to support caregivers. We need to support programs like daycares for our elders. As a social worker, I've seen a lot of the barriers that day programs face in staying open. Access is key. We have to give our elders access and we have to make sure that we are supporting them in staying in their homes. And that also has to do with housing affordability and protecting tenants.
So, oh, we each get 30 seconds still, right? Okay, so I'll add to that, that I'm currently actually caring for my 90 year old aunt who lives with me. And I have seen how severe the crisis is. We talked about a shortage of childcare centers and childcare workers. There's also a shortage of, you know, the folks who give care to the elderly. If one of the normal shifts can't be there, I'm the backup shift. I can take off a day from work if I have to. I'm getting close to the limit of where it'll be a problem at work, but I can do it. A lot of people can't do that. How do we solve for that?
In-home support services is one of the key programs funded by our county that supports our elders being able to stay in their homes. It's a program that's really struggling to retain workers and to train workers. And I think that program specifically needs a lot of attention and support. And I would be open to learning more about how I can better advocate for these issues. Thank you.
The second question, how would you prioritize Measure K and the increase in allotted funds that will be under your control within your district to align with the unique needs of our older adults and people with disabilities?
First of all, just by saying that this population in this part of our community deserves access to those funds, that has to be just a given, right? Another piece of this, I mean, how, I'm sorry, can you restate your question one more time?
Yes.
Like struggled with it for a second.
How will you prioritize Measure K and the increase in allotted district funds the district would receive that would be under your control to align with the unique needs of this population?
Start your time over.
Thank you. Yes. Leveraging those funds to work with your coalition has to be a part of the solution. Right now, it's so hard for people to find workers and to keep them. And one of the things I think that COVID really brought out was that there can be access created when it is necessary. And we had to wait until COVID to come and teach us a lesson about how to better do that. But there are so many other examples of what we can do to support our elders that are similar to access. And I will end there. Thank you.
So it's a great question. It's also a difficult question. I think prioritizing discretionary Measure K funds, if that's what you're asking about. You're asking about the supervisor's discretionary funds. You know, it's going to be a year to year, situation to situation because we don't know what fire is going to need to be put out in any given year. I think generally where I would look to prioritize is where we could leverage the fund with synergistic opportunities. Where are there matching funds available? Again, back to Again, back to the layer cake approach that we often use to improve our infrastructure, our streets, our sewers, et cetera, et cetera. We get federal grants, state grants, local grants, and then we match with a nonprofit. All of a sudden, you just turn $50,000 into $600,000. So I think, I think if you're asking me for kind of an overarching philosophy on prioritizing, that's what I would do. But I would also be looking to make sure that those funds were spread equitably through the communities of need, people of color, LGBT communities, aging communities and our young people.
Ooh, I struggled with that question, but I have the answer now. So the Measure K funded programs that support our elders right now are the Daily City Partnerships Friendly Visiting and Meals Express, the Elder Dependent Adult Protection Team and the Institute on Aging Friendship Line. I think we need to make sure that people know about those programs and that they are part of volunteering and supporting those programs with Measure K funds, but also with going even past that. One of the, one of the other examples of access, right? We had great, the Great Plates Program during the brink of the pandemic, but that program has ended, and we need to continue programs like that.
One more question from Thrive. So, the Bay Area Equity Atlas, which if you aren't familiar with it, is a fantastic place with huge amounts of data, and they recently released data on racial segregation patterns across the Bay Area. Several San Mateo County census tracts in both District Two and District Three top the list for the most segregated areas of white wealth in the entire Bay Area, indicative of ongoing exclusionary housing policies. Can you describe your approach to disrupting local housing segregation in your district to ensure that communities of color have equitable access to education, employment, transportation and quality housing? Expect me to remember?
I think it's Charles.
I think it is, but I don't want to overstep.
It is, it is Charles.
Okay. So this is an area where I've not only talked the talk, but I've walked the walk. It's one of the reasons I ran for council. I grew up in an area where my school was what we then referred to as majority-minority, and that was my normal. Then we moved down to San Mateo at some point and I saw something completely different. The number one way that we can combat this is with building truly affordable housing on the transit corridor. I'm going to repeat that again. The number one way we can combat this is to build truly affordable housing on the transit corridor. In Belmont, it was a town when I got there that said no to, to pretty much all housing, and there was a lot of othering. The former head of HLC, Housing Leadership Council, was chased out of City Hall when he brought up low-income housing and told, "We don't want those people here." That is a true story. You can check it out. Now we have 331 low, very low, extremely low-income housing units either built or in the immediate pipeline in the near future. That is the number one most impactful thing we can do to change that.
I think it is very important that we build affordable housing close to transit, but I don't think that is the only place we build affordable housing. That is not how you confront the legacy of housing segregation in any community. You don't continue to, to follow those lines. You have to break those lines and those borders. I know that there is a similar situation, a situation similar to this actually happening right now in the city of Belmont, and there is a movement called Save East Belmont, because this community, who is close to transit, who has been historically underrepresented, does not want to bear the burden of having the only housing built in the entire city. They want it to be spread equitably. I saw the same thing in North Central San Mateo. These kinds of issues happen even here in this, in these council chambers. To this day, there's a North Central fam, not, sorry, not a North Central family. There's a family that lives in Baywood who faced, honestly, some, I'll just stop there, but these things still happen. They're right here.
I'm really, really glad that was raised. The folks who are advocating to not have housing near transit are folks who live in $2 million houses. So I think we should be careful about throwing around certain words. These are folks who are quite affluent, but just don't want housing near them even though they live near the transit corridor, and we've seen that time and time again, and I will call it out every time. It is othering most of the time. It's people with means who don't want people without means to live near them. No serious land use professional in this day and age is going to tell you to build density away from the transit corridor. It's bad for the environment, it's bad for our own communities, and it's bad for us.
I just want to lift up what housing segregation continues to look like in our community right now. If you go to North Central San Mateo, if you go to East Belmont, you will see tighter streets, more cars, more families living together. That is what it looks like. And when you drive across El Camino and you see more space, less inclusion, that, that, that is something that we have to combat also. It has to be part of the solution.
Thank you. We have come to the end of the questions. So now we'll do a, your closing statements, and this time we are going to... Feel free to stand up, because I know you want to. You have 90 seconds.
All right. Anyone remember the Micro Machines commercials? So first off, I'd like to invite Novelia to come walk East Belmont with me. It's one of our most vibrant communities, one of our nicest communities. It has something that I don't have in my neighborhood, which is sidewalks, two tennis courts and a basketball court. It's fantastic. I love East Belmont. I, I think we've heard a lot tonight, and if you listen carefully, you heard where some of our differences are. I'm going to repeat something I said earlier. It doesn't have to happen to me for me to care about it and want to fix it. That's one of the areas where we differ, and that's okay. I welcome differing viewpoints. My opponent thinks that only she can represent certain people. I don't think that's the world we live in. I don't think it's the world we should live in. Each of us, as a local elected official, has to represent our entire community. We have to be willing to listen to all the voices, even the voices that don't agree with us, look at the data, analyze it as passionately and make what we think is the best choice for our community. For the last decade of my life, I've dedicated myself to that. That's my lived experience. I've missed many things with my children that I wish I had not. I've made it to enough that I think I've been a good dad. Hundreds of hours of meetings, transit, land use, affordable housing, public safety. Belmont was one of the first, if not the first, cities in San Mateo County to have a public safety subcommittee. I want to bring the subtotal of that knowledge, that experience to all of District Two, my home for the last 33 years and my home for the next 33, God willing. Thank you.
We deserve bold leadership. We deserve leaders who motivate and inspire everyone in our community to not only use their voices, but to know that their voices matter and lead to positive change. People are suffering in our county, and we all agree that we have to do better. But how can our communities be at the table when only one demographic is represented? Representation matters. That's why I chose to go up against my opponent here, who has been funded by special interest groups, is connected to Sheriff Batmobile Bolanos. It is unacceptable that a senior member of my opponent's campaign publicly called me a neophyte and that the council member has used his campaign funds to misrepresent my work. These tactics harm all of us. Our children are watching and I won't be silent. In the words of Audrey Lord, "When I dare to be powerful, to use my strength in the, in the service of my vision, then it becomes less and less important whether I am afraid." I see the strength, experience and vision that our county needs right here in this room. Thank you, Thrive, Choose Children, Age Forward Coalition and every community organization present for hosting us. Our communities do not have time to keep waiting our turn. Our turn is right now. Thank you.
Apparently I'm not keeping the microphone close enough, so hopefully I am now. So I want to, to say that, you know, like I said, this was a dual-purpose forum. It was both for the purpose of us getting to know you better, but you also getting to know us better. So I hope that we accomplish that. I hope you really had an opportunity to hear from these organizations that are just doing really amazing work and just as a reminder about how much work there is still left to be done. So Thrive and Choose Children, we want to sincerely thank both of you for taking the time to be with us and to really having thoughtful quests, thoughtful questions, thoughtful answers. The, your views on this really matters. The Board of Supervisors matters, the surprising stuff, the unsurprising stuff. Really, the Board of Supervisors really has control over a lot. So we'd also like to acknowledge and thank our partners. So thank you so much, Age Forward Coalition, Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities, San Francisco Peninsula People Power, Leadership Council San Mateo, Youth Leadership Institute, CAMINA, Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council. We love the new name, but it's really long. I want to thank our really fantastic and hardworking, behind-the-scenes Thrive team. I don't even think you can see anybody here, but they've been working nonstop on this. So thank you to the Thrive team. Thank you to Ann for volunteering, being voluntold to do our timekeeping. It was not an easy job. And finally, I want to thank all of you for attending and invite you to share the recording with your friends. Join us at our upcoming candidate forums. It was not an easy job. And other events, it can be all found at Thrive's website, and like I said, there are other candidate forums there as well. There are a lot of choices in November. Please vote. I know that sounds like really basic, but it is amazing how many people are really concerned citizens and then don't bother. So I know you all will, because you're already in this room, but tell your friends, make sure everyone's up to date. In San Mateo County, it's awesome, because you can register to vote and vote on the same day, so if you need to change your registration, just go into a vote center. They're all open, starting 30 days before the election, so super easy stuff. I'm sure everyone will go in, out and tell their friends and continue to be involved in this process, because this is how we make change. So thank you all so much for being here.